Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two, six P M. In attendance of Mogul and Vice Chair Russ Fox Chair and Jason Perron Clerk.
Evening. Welcome to Select Board meeting for the town of Southwick, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. Lisa Anderson, our secretary has already announced who is here. So with that, if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I I keep saying this, but this is. We're we're not having good luck. I'm going to ask for another moment of silence for Karen Reed. Just a wonderful person. I've known her since I was a young, young kid. She served on the house, currently serving on the Housing Authority Cultural Council and served on the Community Preservation Committee. So if we could have a moment of silence for Karen. Thank you. The next thing up is public comments. It gives people that an opportunity that wants to make a statement to the Select Board. This is your opportunity. I'd ask that anyone in the room, please stand and state your name and address. And we'll do the room first and then we'll go to those online. I see a hand up.
Good evening. Inka Hotel in thirty-five Pine Road. I've been attending the Economic Development Commission meetings as a just a resident of town for the past year. And last week's agenda, we were talking about shop small, shop local. And I presented to the committee an opportunity for us to have a little fun with next Saturday. Well, it's actually not going to be this Saturday. So what we did is we took a vote and everyone agreed that attended the meeting to really do a little bit of of a fun event centered around shop small. So I've contacted out of twenty-two businesses. Sixteen so far that have agreed to participate. And what we're going to do is we're going to put these bags at the sixteen businesses. There's going to be raffle tickets alongside of it with also a bow coming out from Westfield Bank's pens. So they've donated me a whole box of their pens for people to fill out a raffle ticket. Or a drawing ticket, right? It's a drawing ticket. So that anybody who's shopping local this coming Saturday is going to be eligible to win gift certificates to our local eateries. I've identified twenty-four eateries. So far I've gotten ten that have agreed to give me at least a twenty-five dollar gift certificate. Right now, out of whoever enters into this, this coming Saturday, there's going to be ten winners. And with the twenty-five dollar gift certificates, we know that if you got a couple going to one of our local eateries, they're going to spend more money. So it's going to draw some additional revenues coming into town. So there is going to be, I've sent to Mike earlier today, a list of all of the businesses so far that have chosen to participate. And we're hoping to get it out there in the public as soon as we can. But most importantly, this is going to be on all the counters this coming Saturday. So if you're shopping local, please look for these. Fill it out a little ticket and we're going to do the drawing on the December twenty-first E D C meeting. And I'd like to offer an opportunity for either the Select Board as a whole or one of your members to come to do the drawing of the winners.
Fantastic. That's an awesome idea.
And this is the, I had my assistant create this cute little flyer that I've attached to all the bags so that people know that it's being promoted by the E D C in town and that the drawing will be on the twenty-first here at the Town Hall at the E D C meeting.
Excellent. Awesome.
Any questions?
No, it's thank you for into E D C for doing that. That's excellent.
Perfect.
Mike, you want to say anything as chairman of E D C or?
Yes. In the bags that I gave you, there's an updated list of all the eating and drinking establishments in town. There's over thirty of them. And we gave some materials, a couple of bags and some other stickers and some other information. The businesses up and down College Highway this past week. And they're all multi, they're very enthusiastic. And if you give a business person a chance to talk, Russ, you might be familiar with the concept. They could talk for ten or fifteen minutes about their business, which is great. You want them to be successful and you want them to be able to talk about the good things in their business. So we're promoting again the Small Business Saturday. There's been ads on T V, some businesses promoting it or large companies like American Express or Chamber of Commerce in Springfield or some other cities. It's a concept of you spend most of your money now on shopping on Amazon or shopping in the big box store. Spend a few of your dollars at local businesses. We've got everything from pastry shops, you're going to breakfast, lunch, dinner, Budweiser, if you're into drinking. We've got all sorts of businesses. You need new flooring for your house or you need various other products. Go up and down College Highway. There's lots of them there as well as other town, other streets in town.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else under public comments? Is there anybody on Zoom under public comments?
No hands.
Okay, the next thing I have is an update on the marijuana grow facility. And I see two gentlemen, I didn't think you were coming, but you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, no, we're here. I'm here. So did you receive the email?
I received it late this afternoon. Yes, so.
And as I wrote,
probably if you could.
My name is Bill Fontaine. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, this is Tim Rook. Uh, my partner Christopher Lally is out of town right now, so he could not be here.
Okay.
And Tim Rook, I'll explain this person in a second. So my partner Christopher Lally and I, due to personal reasons, as I wrote in the email, we will not be able to pursue that. We worked out a deal from the last time I spoke on an email. I said we were working on a, we were in talks with another group that wants to pursue the same project that we were doing. So I worked with another group. We've worked out a deal with them. Actually, after I sent that email today, it was a very late last minute deal that we worked out with them and they would like to purchase. They are going to purchase our license, purchase the land, and they are going to continue to follow in the same footsteps as far as growing a cultivation facility on that parcel of land. Okay. That's where we're at.
All right, things have kind of changed, but I'm going to have a little latitude here if 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 you.
And this is Tim. They just need a little bit more time. I spoke with the owners and they just said they, he knows I was coming to the meeting. He called me at five o'clock. He's like, you gotta, when you get to that meeting, blah, blah, blah. We just need another time. He's like, but the deal is good. We worked out a deal. He's like, we're just going to need a little bit more time. And more time is a couple of weeks. I think that's what they need.
Okay. Did you want to make a comment or? Hey, come on up to the table, introduce yourself and just for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tim Rook and I'm a friend of Bill's and helped connect two parties to make an agreement. An agreement was literally reached at about five thirty. And what we would ask is the indulgence of the board so that the lawyers can speak to each other. It would be an asset purchase, as I understand it. So the plans would remain the same. The location remains the same. The name remains the same. And we would work things out pretty quickly once an agreement is signed. Right now, just a verbal agreement handshake gentleman's agreement between the two parties. And we're asking for your indulgence so that we could you explain what we'd like to do and gain the support of the board.
And that's a, this group is a very serious interested group. They have recently purchased a dispensary in Springfield. So for them, it's kind of a home run for them where they can cultivate, manufacture their product and then just distribute it out of the dispensary.
Okay. What kind of timetable were you thinking about? Are we talking about after the holidays getting together or?
We'll get together with you based upon your availability. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. This. Mr. Mogul, any questions?
No, I think that's appreciate the update.
The only thing I would ask is, since I was not a member of the board when this all happened, can I just a brief? I know what it is. I just don't what exactly we were looking at.
Why I can, what? As far as a facility and size.
Yeah, just size and everything. Yeah, I just want to break down everything you're doing.
So you know, the project, I mean, the parcel alone. So we went, we met with the zoning board and we got a thirty-five foot variance for a facility. It's going to be cultivation cultivation only. And we were going to have a, originally it was going to be a sixteen thousand. We have shrunk it down to an eleven thousand square foot facility. And that should be, we should be able to pump out four thousand, max four thousand pounds a year. We would start small and we drill into that four thousand pounds a year. I don't know what else.
Um, looks like a bone.
It's going to look like, yeah, the, the design of the building, we have designed it. We met with the zoning board and we went back.
And there was already a host community agreement put in place.
Host community agreements and the special permits here. Yeah, everything. We've got the license from the state. We have like all the assets that we need, municipality assets that we need, we have obtained. And the license from the state is good till, well, we have to renew it every year. So it's good until August of twenty-three.
Okay. Some of the information I really want.
Thank you, Jason. All right, then what we'll do is we'll try to fit something in. So because obviously it has been a while and and that's why you got the letter or email.
You saw my email. There was nobody more disappointed than myself than Chris Lally about the two of us not being able to pursue this. But due to personal issues on my end, I I cannot do that anymore.
Okay.
I stopped working due to those issues and fortunately at the last minute, you know, we came in and.
So who's going to be the contact person? I guess I should ask that.
I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And whoever your staff person is to try and set up some time and we'll have a meeting.
Okay, sounds fair.
Thank you.
Great.
We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Got a little confusing there, but.
But the phone rang at five fifteen or whatever.
But it's great when we have a dialogue face to face and it's great. Everybody knows what's going on and and hopefully the project will go forward, you know, it's permitted in the town of Southwick and, you know.
Yeah, like I said in my email, we can't thank you guys enough. We appreciate all the help that we received from the Board of Selectmen, from all the different boards in town. Everybody's been great to work with. And unfortunately, like I said, through those personal reasons, I'm not going to be able to be a part of it.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you guys. Have a good holiday.
All right, you too.
All right. I'm going to take things out of order and bring up the President of Wally Computer Associates. So if that's something that's going to be under our action. As everybody knows, at the town meeting that we had last Tuesday evening at the high school, the voters approved a TIF agreement. Now I need a vote of this board to recommend sending it to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And if that we get that in a positive vote, then we're going to sign off everything. And Lisa wants to make a quick copy of this before you take it. If that's okay.
Be great.
Okay, just for the record, Mike Shields, President of Wally Computers Associates. Okay, gentlemen, Mr. Crone, it's up to you.
We'll make a motion to bring forward the TIF agreement and the bullet.
Okay, and submit it to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Okay, I will second that roll call vote, Russ Fox.
I. Jason Perron, I.
Okay.
One extension.
Okay. We will sign. Oh, I know why, Lisa, you don't need to make copies of this. It's because we're waiting for someone to get back into town. So you do not have to make copies of it.
Okay, that's not our only copy.
Yeah, well, once we get all the signatures.
Wednesday morning.
We're gonna, we're gonna get it back. But I will ask you, Mike, to sign in in front of.
Thank you.
Because the agreement is actually with Wally Computers Associates and also the owner of the property.
Yeah.
I think they got them all.
All right, Mike, thank you for coming in tonight.
Get your copy. Yeah, thank you.
And when we have all the signatures, then we'll have to take the original or of course, you know, the original is going to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but we'll all need.
Yeah, we'll get that on Wednesday. John comes back late tomorrow. So but I appreciate the board's help on this and the support, obviously, from the town and the board. So we're looking forward to the project.
And I I hope that when you have a groundbreaking ceremony, we will be invited.
Be there.
Okay.
Be there.
Right. We don't need the gold shovels.
That's right.
But if, but if you have them, that's fine. I only have one in my collection, you know, and I'm getting older.
I love it. So we'll see what happens.
I prefer platinum.
All right, it's fine. It's an expensive project enough. So, but no, I appreciate your help. So thank you very much. All right, have a good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, you too. Thank you.
Okay, we are going back to acknowledge payroll warrant number two, three, one, one dated eleven, eight, twenty-two in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. Acknowledge payroll warrant number two, three, one, three dated eleven, twenty-one, twenty-two in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Acknowledge payables warrant number two, three, one, four, two, three, one, four B dated eleven, fourteen, twenty, twenty-two in the amount of one million, thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and five cents. I need a motion to accept the minutes dated eleven, seven, twenty-two.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I. Jason Perron, I.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the executive session minutes dated eleven, seven, twenty-two that should be in front of you.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Make the motion. Reorganizing all this.
Okay, take your time.
It was one of the ones from the chairman. We handed out right before.
Said you can't lose it. It's. And you have to give it back.
I know I have to give it back. How much I know.
Take it in this. Take your time. Take your time. It was with all this other stuff, Jason.
Good call, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion. I'm looking for a second.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I. Actually, there's. Yeah.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended. All right, we'll pass those back. Oh, you got two. That's, that's why the problem. All right. Okay. Going to the action section.
So that wasn't it?
A little bit of action, I guess, right?
All right, we had a bid opening on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, and this was for obsolete equipment. Uh, it looks like we got rid of a nineteen eighty-one Chevrolet truck. Have a moment of silence for that one.
Truck, if I remember.
Uh, Crestview Construction got it with a high bid of eight thousand dollars.
Good money, Chris.
I guess it is. I think they're going to the John Deere in nineteen eighty-four, John Deere Loader went for six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Berry Constructions LLC. Uh, they also got a two thousand and ten Ford pickup for five hundred and fifty dollars. And then Mike Wes got uh, got a two thousand and fourteen Ford Explorer Utility for two thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. He also has a two thousand and six Ford sedan for one thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. So uh, grand total.
Nineteen one seventy-three.
All right, so we got rid of some obsolete equipment before the snow flies. So uh, that's an excellent. Okay, we already did Wally TIF agreement. So then we're going down to we vote to accept a uh, a mass insurance. It's M I I A, but I always get.
I'm sorry. I think we actually have to vote to approve that.
The obsolete equipment.
So I'll make the motion to accept and approve the surplus bid results and and sell the material as noted on the sheet.
Okay. Um, need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I. Jason Perron, I.
Okay. All right, and then we did get a grant for seven thousand dollars from the Mass Municipal Association Insurance part of that. So that was for safety training. So I need a motion to accept that grant of seven thousand dollars.
So moved. I will second the motion.
All in favor, roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I. Jason Perron, I.
Okay. I need a vote uh, to authorize the chairperson to sign a memorandum of understanding or agreement with the Southwood Police Department Union Coalition with a change to the work week payrolls cycle. This is something that we've been trying to get for quite a while. Uh, Chief Landis is here. Would you like to make any comment on this or?
I think it's pretty salt explanatory. It's more logistics for our accounting at the P D and then accounting here to put it everything together for the deadline.
Right. Kind of reduce some of that Saturday overtime also doing the calculus. Yeah, and Sunday. All right, so I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign.
So moved. I will second the motion to remove the payroll scheduling request.
Okay, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I. Jason Perron, I.
Lisa, do you have the original? I can pass that back, please. Okay, next I need a motion to accept and approve a mass D E P recycling grant in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Mr. Brown is on Zoom. Mr. Brown.
Yes, how you doing today?
Make any comment on this?
Uh, yeah, this is a grant we apply for every year. Uh, this year the award was for two thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, as you noted. Uh, we typically use these funds for purposes related to recycling, uh, such as purchasing bins or making repairs to some more equipment.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
I need a, need a motion.
Thanks to Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Fledo. I'll make that motion. Now, I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I. Jason Perron, I.
Okay. All right, the next is I'm going to step aside. I'm going to let the Vice Chair handle this.
Fantastic. So this is a one day liquor license request for the Southwick Recreation Center for a holiday event to be held on
twelve, three.
That's a tough date.
That's a three.
Twelve, three. And believe they're also requesting to waive the presence of the officer, correct?
Correct.
So we'd be looking for, we've done these before for them in the past. I'd be looking for a motion to grant a one day liquor license to the Southwick Rec Center for twelve, three between five P M. and ending at eleven P M.
I will make the motion to for the liquor license request of the recreational center for their Xmas party, excuse me, Christmas party.
And I will second the motion. We'll take a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, I.
Jason Perron, I.
Russ Fox stands. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, or Vice Chairman. All right. Okay, next, we are looking to accept a, a gift to the Southwood Police K nine gift account. Uh, this is from the Ransford W. Kellogg Post eight seventy-two. Our, our veterans, they announced this at the Veterans Day Ceremony. Uh, it's for a amount of eight hundred dollars that they raised at a spaghetti dinner uh, to go towards our K nine gift account. I need a motion.
So moved. I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I. Jason Perron, I.
Chief Landis, you want to say anything or?
No, just, uh, it was just a great event. It was a spaghetti dinner that we put together and fill a lot of the voids that that go up with the dog and some of the town stuff that got associated with Mike's program and those great, great events.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, the next thing I have is approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three D P W snow removal plow contract. Somehow I got this mixed up. There it is. Thank you, Doug. It looks like we have Canes Mechanical, eight trucks. We have a new person, BP Certified Welding, three trucks. Ferrier Home Improvement, one truck, Mark's Property Service, four truck, Solak Masonry, six trucks. And a few months ago, we did approve a increase in the hours. Uh, D P W Director Brown, did you want to make any statement?
Uh, not much. We did lose one contractor this year. They chose not to renew. That was a great proglomber. So we did have BP Certified Welding on our waitlist. And they have three trucks are willing to, to plow for us this year. Um, they're local from Southwick, which is nice. They plowed in the past, I think for Westfield. Uh, but they're happy to make the move over to Southwick. So as far as a total number of trucks, they have not changed. Uh, we did, we did, um, Grapebrook had four trucks on the road and passed, so we only got three back from BP certified. Uh, so we did bump up the number of trucks from Solak Masonry to make up that difference. So the total number of vehicles is the same as in past years.
All right, thank you, Randy. I need a motion to approve.
Those guys are going to have to do a great job. I appreciate all the help from Grapebrook over the years. They did a great job. I know they plowed my street, but but I'll make a motion to accept this list as presented by the D P W there.
I will second the motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I. Jason Perron, I.
Okay. Now we're looking to authorize a fiscal twenty-two E M P G grant to Mima for two thousand, nine hundred dollars for two thousand nine hundred dollars for LED lights. So. I don't have. I'm trying to break down this for you, Angus, so I can explain. Okay. And I'm looking, well, I think it's uh.
Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency.
Right, and MEMO is Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, but the EMPGA Grant, Emergency Management.
Planning, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah. I, we will get clarification on that for you because that's a new one. I'm not sure. But it is a grant for twenty-nine hundred dollars for LED lights.
Emergency Management Performance Grant.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay.
I didn't have performance in the lottery, but that's what it is.
Okay. All right.
I would have thought planning somewhere.
Okay, so if you could make a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay, need a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, roll, roll, vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. That's the problem with getting chair mail at the last minute, you know, you don't get a chance to find out what it was. All right, we're going to acknowledge our uh, unfortunately, our uh, Health Director will be leaving us. Uh, I believe he's going to be leaving us uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, so we will need to post for a new person. Um, it is a very competitive market out there. That's what we're finding out. It uh, so. I think uh, what we're looking to do is to acknowledge the resignation of our Board of Health Director and to vote to uh, post uh, for a, for the Board of Health vacancy.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
And uh, that posting uh, is, I believe, already on our website. Uh, basically, it's a uh, seeking a person thirty-seven point five hours per week. Uh, requirements are planning, implementing, managing public and health issues within the town. Uh, obviously, we're looking for someone with the experience in public health. Uh, one-year administration experience, preferred and a bachelor's degree in science field. Uh, of course, a valid driver's license. And that those applicants will be reviewed by the elected members of the Board of Health. And then they will be making uh, their decision. All right, it says uh, the next thing here is to set the select board meeting schedule for January through April. I'd like to put that on hold till our next meeting, you know? Um, I'm, I'm gonna suggest to the board that we go back to weekly meetings because we're gonna be into the budget season. I, I realize that we're still shorthanded. Uh, but uh, the budgets take a long time. So.
I'm gonna listen to your expertise.
Okay, but that, that's gonna be my suggestion, other than the mandatory holidays that we have to uh, take off. And I know that we uh, I usually uh, don't meet the week of the uh, Mass Municipal Convention, so we'll work around that. Then there is a major holiday in, in March. I will educate you to that one. You know, because uh, we always take off.
National holiday.
It's a national holiday, so we take that meeting off.
Is it a green holiday?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Actually, I found out I'm fifty-five percent Irish.
Welcome to the club. Welcome to the club.
Thought I was, I was told I was French and Indian the majority of my life.
Well, hey, so you can't be a US Senator, but you can enjoy the national holiday. All right. Going on to new business. Uh, new business is unfortunately, uh, because of the passing of uh, Karen Reed. Uh, I need a motion to uh, post uh, the vacancy. Uh, there's still six months left till the uh, town meeting, uh, and then uh, someone wouldn't have to run for the remainder of the two years since Karen was just re-elected.
So make a motion to post the vacancy and seek volunteers for that.
But I will second that motion.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Uh, other new business, uh, could go under dates to remember old business, but I just wanna mention the Veterans Day Ceremony on Friday, the eleventh. Uh, what a turnout.
Amazing.
But a great turnout and uh, the band had their new uniforms because they have seventh and eighth grade up there now. I think there had to have been at least forty uh, young adults and they did a great job uh, in the streets. Were actually lined, uh, which was great. And then we have the beautiful uh, Town Common that's been redone. Um, it, it just, just was a beautiful ceremony. Uh, the next thing I'd like to acknowledge is uh, uh, the three of us uh, attended the Senior Center last Wednesday and gave out certificates uh, to three young ladies that turned a hundred. And uh, I think there was a big article in the local newspaper today. I haven't read the whole thing, but it's very interesting because they were talking about uh, uh, things uh, during their lifetime. So that was pretty good. And uh, I was also asked to give out a fourth uh, certificate on Sat-, this past Saturday at Tucker's for Alice Carbin, I'll let turned a hundred years old. Uh, she'll turn a hundred years old tomorrow. So it's uh, like I, like I said at the Senior Center, and I said on Saturday, start drinking Southwood water. Drink as much as you possibly can because it's gotta be the water.
And we had uh, an event earlier this year in May, right? There was another.
We had three then.
Yeah.
We had three then, absolutely. And I've, I, 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 I've lost count how many I've given out over the past ten years.
So there's hope for you, Mr. Chairman.
You're gonna start two now. I guess, welcome to the, welcome to the club, Jason. Welcome to the club. I thought I was just gonna have to contend with one, but now it's two.
I, I said nothing. I was being very good.
I, I know.
And it is, again, and I'll say the same thing to this crowd that I said to that crowd. It is my profound wish, really, that uh, we have a certificate for every single person in this room someday for that, because that, it is amazing that we had so many in the last couple of years and God bless.
Okay, new business, Mr. Morgan.
Uh. No, I have a couple for old business and the only new business I have is um, I wonder if we should carry out into the new year um, for future discussion. Um. Since it ties in with the resignation of the Health Director, that we should have a discussion with the Board of Health regarding the composition of and makeup of the Board of Health and how it, currently it's an elected board. For years, we've struggled to get folk to come out, to run for that board. And um, you know, maybe we should do a little survey of air uh, other area communities to see how they go about to do it. Um, I know I had reached out to a local historian and uh, I guess back into the seventies into the early eighties, the Health Board was the Board of Selectment um, at the time and literally witnessing perk tests, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously not appropriate in this day and age, but I wonder um, given the difficulty we've had, maybe that's something we should look at as to how that board is um, put into place and how that goes, goes forward, just for future discussion out into the new year at some point.
I think that's a, a good idea, you know, that uh, looking at the type of candidates that should be on that board to set policy. Um, especially in cases where we're having problems keeping a hold of health directors.
Yep.
So, um, it might be a, um, appropriate discussion uh, to float out there and see what people think. Um, Jason, your business?
I actually have a few things, actually. Um, not a few, but a, so a couple of things. One of them actually might fall underneath the old business. Um, I had a, I guess you call it a round table uh, with folks, the citizens that wanted to come on Thursday. Couple of questions came up. Um. One, I posted Mr. Morgan, Mr. Morgan, regards to the uh, vote that we took and the approval for the, actually not approval, since we have to vote to get it on, if I get on it in May, uh, with the, the, um. Yes, uh, people were asking about funding sources. I'm under the assumption that probably some of this is gonna come from that to state or in federal upgrades for broadband.
Hopefully.
Okay, that was one of the big ones people were asking about.
I can talk at length, but not, probably not right now. It's, there's a lot of money out there in community compact grant. There's state money. There's federal money. A lot of the federal money is being uh, targeted, I would say earmarked, targeted at underserved or not served community. So we are not an underserved community by the very definition. I would argue we are, but that's for me, but we're going to explore, that's part of the, the high-speed internet sub is going to explore that at length to try to reduce the cost to uh, the ratepayers for that.
That was, obviously, that was a, a big thing.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Um, the other thing that came up is out of the discussion, uh, when we set the tax rate a couple of weeks ago. I've, several people have reached out to me. I tried to explain it as best as I could understand it and it's very complicated, as you gentlemen are aware. Uh, I was asked to ask if there's a way we could get the assessors or the assess, the Board of Assessors to somehow at some point come in and give some sort of explanation as to how that is set. Um, that's, I heard that from numerous people. Um, even if it's something that they do write up and I can read it off. Uh, but uh, numerous people are asking, they, they, they'd like to understand that process a little bit better.
You, you mean that the?
How they, yeah, how that, how the rates are set based on the, the, you know, the amount of parcels, the amount of residential, non-residential. They're just curious, um, because the big comment was about, um, you know, several people think that the commercial tax base should be a little bit higher. I've tried to explain it. I will admit that when I was first, we weren't looking into the select board and stuff like that, you know, other towns do do this split rate. Um, but after learning what I have and comparing everything to do a split rate here in Southwick, it would be a disproportionately unfair to businesses to, to kind of unload more on them. We don't have the, we have about four thousand something parcels of residential, non-business, commercial, and about four hundred. So if you kind of figure out the math, it, it makes sense. It's awful long time to make sense, but I just would like the uh, ask if we could get the, something from the assessment, the assessors board, or have them come in and just give a, a rundown for people at some point.
Yeah. Maybe what we can do is reach out to them and have our consultant, Roy Bishop, kind of explain it, you know, and try to get it in layman's terms.
Yes.
You know, because he represents probably around thirty-one, forty-one communities.
That would, that'd be.
Western Mass and used to work the Department of Revenue.
Okay.
So that, that might be an option.
Perfect. That'll give us something to talk to people with. The um, this one, I'm not sure if it's gonna fall under old business or new business. Uh, we have been having issues, as you gentlemen are aware. There's been, the chief is aware, uh, one-on-one of Lake Grove, Lake Life. She's in the process of selling the business portion. Um, I guess due to the issues we're having with the docs and all that other stuff, the potent, uh, potential buyers are, are hesitant right now. Um, and she has asked if she could come in front of the board with counsel and chief or, or do something with the board and the chief and try and figure out some sort of uh, remedy. And as I, we're already dealing with for issues, I'm not sure where we can go with this.
I, I don't think it's something we can discuss in, in public.
That's what I, that's why I was asked.
Right.
So um, we'll go from that and I think that maybe. That was the big stuff. That's all I have.
Yep. All right. We're going down to old business and dates to remember. First thing is we have a meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, the twenty-second, five-thirty PM in Powder Mill uh, School Library. This is per our regional agreement. Jason's basically, we just talk in general. You know, there's no real specifics because it's, it's only November. Um, we don't know what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is gonna do. Uh, last year we got hit up, what, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand more. Uh, so. What the state figured that we needed to come up with.
Okay.
So, but we talk about uh, things the schools are looking at, things that they anticipate. And gives us an opportunity to let them know things that we're anticipating. So it's, it's just a kind of a little informal back and forth, but it is required for the regional agreement. So again, and that is open to the public. And that's tomorrow night, five-thirty PM. All right. North Pond, I mean, that's an ongoing thing. I think I mentioned it before that we're gonna hope to do some, some tree trimming uh, during the winter time uh, to uh, help alleviate at least one problem. Uh, Chief Landis has been working with the Conservation Commission on other issues and protocols uh, for security measures. So that's going on. And I'm sure we'll be following up with a meeting uh, once we get to January. Sewer system, IMA, um. Haven't followed up with a meeting with the Mayor Westfield that I requested. Um, we wanted to uh, first have a meeting with Randy, uh, Attorney Coyle, Carl and myself to, you know, kind of figure out the, the best way to approach this. Um, but it's something that we have to get done, uh, because it will be a vote on the annual town meeting. And Doug, the uh, Southwick playing board company?
Your next meeting, November twenty-eighth.
Okay. And marijuana.
Tuesday, right? Yeah, twenty-nine.
Okay.
So that's done. Well done. I missed that last meeting.
All right, so then uh, what we'll do is uh, get a copy so that we can uh, go over and have our discussion. Uh, marijuana dispensary, um, we're, we're still looking at that. Uh, town website, Jason?
We came up with a, a, a start of a remedy. Um, sat with Jim Middleton and we went over it. Um. So everybody that's watching and listening can hear this, uh, on the town website, on the front page, we have an About Us dropdown menu. When you click on that now on the left-hand side in the menu, you will now see a meeting schedules. Um, when you click on meeting schedules, it'll now bring you to each individual board. You click on that and then they have their individual calendars. No more bouncing around from board to board and stuff like that. There's a direct line to each board.
Okay.
So that's the best we could come up with right now with the, because uh, uh, Jim said it was a vendor issue, so it would require further uh, input from them to maybe do an individual meeting schedule page, but I think uh, right now, this is the, uh, good solution. And, and actually additionally, I think I mentioned it last time, if you also go on that page, you can click on be contacted via email for the boards that you, and you can click individually the boards that you want to be contacted.
Okay.
So that should be a, a little bit easier for people to deal with once they are aware, where to find it. And I will keep telling people that as well.
Okay, well, thank you for that work. Uh, the marijuana host agreement for Hudson Drive Facility. I asked Carl today, I said, what's the status? And it's one lawyer talking to another lawyer. Uh, the other gentleman that keeps sending us the email isn't really the lawyer. He's just kind of a, a broker. So I don't know what else to tell him other than the lawyers have to get together. They have to have their discussions. And then they're gonna, our lawyer will be making a recommendation to this board. And that's how it works. You know, we're, we're gonna try to work and facilitate it as quickly as possible. But at the same token, it's basically in their court. All right, the last thing I have on the agenda is the Assistant uh, Chief Administrator Officer position. All right, the last thing I have on the agenda is the Assistant Chief Administrator Officer position. We're, we're still getting in applications since we reposted that, and we upped the amount of money. We had one, I think, very good interview last week. And we hope to continue with the process, we're having, again, not to be repetitive, we have someone out on family medical leave, and it's, I'm trying to work around that schedule. So we're, 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 we're going, we're trying to do our best, and we hope to have some sort of recommendation in front of the board. I'm, I'm hoping by January. All right. Old business or dates to remember, Mr. Mogul?
Just a few things, Jason alluded to it, thank you. Article two for the municipal light plant passed by a wide margin on the special town meeting on eleven fifteen. The high-speed internet sub will continue to meet and make progress on getting ready for a hopeful eventuality of passing this again in May. May have also been a new world record for a special of twenty-seven minutes. The one we had during COVID was probably a close second, a hundred and ten people. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for running a very efficient meeting that night. Master plan update, we just met last week, and we're gonna have some focus groups coming up. And Norm, Achiever, and Randy, and a few others have worked really hard on, on starting to put together some of the analysis of the data that, coming from the survey, Norm, myself, and the ag com chairman are going to review that presentation for to go over, make sure it's perfect before we post it on the website, and we're also gonna post some of the raw data from the survey on the website soon. Are we all set for Mass Municipal? Is that? I, I don't know if anybody's actually registered.
I don't think it, you did register.
Yeah, okay, all right.
We have, yeah, we have to follow.
Next is, I did meet with Board of Health last week to kind of socialize and bring forth the E. coli testing issue now that Mr. White will be leaving us, so we're gonna have to have, bring some continuity to that as we go through the winter. Alex had set up with Jim the ability for us to post some results on the webpage for people to make their own decision on what they wanted, swimming or boating in the lake based on the result. But there's a lot of framework that needs to come out of that as far as a protocol and where and when in, in concert with lake management and Dr. Mueller. So I asked the Board of Health, since it's a policymaking board, to try to carry that on their agenda for future discussion and work with us in LNC. This past weekend, Cindy Sullivan and the seniors, helping seniors crew from National Honor Society from the high school, went around and cleaned up a bunch of yards around town, raked a ton of leaves. Chief Landis, Deputy Chief Bishop, Chief Stefanowitz were there, Sergeant Crook, a whole host of characters and just some fantastic, fantastic high school kids came out and, and did a ton of work, what a great day. One of the residents came out and was almost brought to tears by the work that those kids did in the yard. So huge thanks to those guys for what they did over there. I talked about the Board of Health. The only thing I want to say about the, the, I, I, I think we, it, it's a good idea to bring in Roy about the, the tax rate, but that the tax recap sheet, which we handed out, and we've handed out in years past, tells you the story of how they get to the tax. It, it's, subtotals all of the property, personal property, residential taxes, and business valuations. The tax it's algebra, so it's your assessed values times rate equals the taxes raised. The taxes raised equals the budget, the budget is legislatively passed at town meeting. So evaluations go up, the tax rate comes down, you still need to get to the equal sign on the other side of the equation. You can look at that recap sheet and see what the factor would be, or what you would need to do to business taxes if you shift it. And that's the problem is we don't have enough, really don't have enough business businesses in town that if you shift, it, it takes on a, a, a huger burden. Not just that, you know, a small rate increase, it becomes a big number. If you, and I'm not proposing this, believe me, to be very clear, if you triple the taxes on business, it would have minimal impact on the other side because it's such a small percentage of the overall revenues of the town. So that's, that's probably where we're at, great to have Roy come in and, and kind of explain that in more detail, and you can look at that recap sheet, which we hand out every year, or it's available for anyone to have it, it, it kind of tells the story. But you know, some, I, I saw it a couple of years ago in the town just north of here, where the mayor was touting that well, that tax rate went down, that's great, but your tax bill went up a hundred and fifty bucks, everybody scratching their head. Of course it did, because the valuations went up, so you, you lower the tax rate, but the valuations went up, your tax, your, the check you got to write still goes up. That's a function of the budget, and so between the Finance Committee and the Select Board and you know, adopt a budget and send a town meeting, that's where you get your tax rate from, it's all, because it's gotta be that side of the equal sign. Oh, and, and when I saw, there was a lot of discussion on this, I saw it on social media, obviously I didn't reply to it, because I didn't wanna violate any, uh, open meeting laws. But someone said, well, we should tax chain stores at a different rate than we tax our local business, I don't think we can do that. I just don't, like, you can't say, oh, sorry, you know, this local coffee shop, you get a different tax rate than a chain of dollar stores or, or something like that, you just can't do that, you, you, you can't be arbitrary and and decide who you're gonna tax at what rate, if you're gonna tax businesses at, at a rate, you gotta tax everybody at a rate. So that's kind of a, just food for thought. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone a healthy, happy, and safe Thanksgiving as we head into the holiday season, so thank you.
Very good. Jason?
Uh, the only old business I have is I'm still researching Cindy Limerick, brought up at the last meeting. The EverSource, I believe, I cannot find that anywhere. So I, as far as I know, local communities cannot bargain with EverSource, everything I've read, it's I'm not sure if she meant, maybe meant the cable or the internet, and I was mistaken, or the way she put, put it forward. But as far as the EverSource aspect of it, we've got no control on that, the state has some control, but.
They just submitted for a huge rating.
Twenty one percent is up to Attorney General to review it, make a recommendation.
And that's about it, Mr. Mogul, and thank you for a little bit more in-depth on the assessment thing. I think you, you mentioned the social media, I tried best to explain why I voted the way I did.
No, I get it, I did, I happened to see it, and I, I would have loved to have said something, but I can't, because that's, you posted it, someone replied to you, it's, it, it would look like discourse between you and I. I don't want to run afoul of that, but it just was worth mentioning, it, it would be great if, I guess, if you could pick and choose who you tax. But that also opens a dangerous, dangerous door.
As I've looked in, there were one or two towns out east that attempted to do that, it didn't work out.
And then, you know, and, and then it, then it opens up to all kinds of, if you're not even handed through the whole process, and then that just opens the door for all kinds of craziness to potentially go on, and that, that's no way to do it.
And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, then I will end on behalf of the Select Board, we wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And can go out throughout the whole community as we enter the holiday season. We will be going into executive session, not to reconvene, so thank you, Lynn Knight. We will be going into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter C, thirty A, Section twenty-one. And Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, Police Chief Labor Counsel. Litigation Matters and Strategy of the Collective Bargaining and Police Union Coalition and Fire Department. Executive session regarding Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B. And exception two, move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining session with non-union personnel to not to reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session, conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and not to reconvene in open session. Declare that, the, the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and not to reconvene in open session. Exception three, move to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And the chair move, go in executive session, conduct strategy sessions in preparation, negotiation, non-union personnel, to not reconvene in open session. Chair declares, move to go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to litigation. That's chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body, and not to reconvene in open session. Regards to Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, a person will have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy, the sphere court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages, we'll call vote, respect, I.
Doug Mogul, I.
Jason Perron, I.